We will return at six o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 26th meeting of the Aurora Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest.
Here.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie.
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here.
And Councilmember Barnage is absent.
Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? All right.
All right, for item five, agenda review, we have closed session announcements. I'll turn that over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. For the closed session item that was read into the record at 5:30 PM, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. And for item 6B, we have no ordinances today, so that takes us straight into the fun stuff. This is the special presentations. So first, we will be recognizing the Pick family, the Aurora Grande Lions Club, and Trevor Weiger. Matt and Karen Barcelos are here from the Lions Club. So I think we'll bring everybody up to the podium and recognize you all at once. So if you would, please meet me over there at the stand.
I don't see any members of the Pick family on Zoom. I'm looking over at Director Balkan.
We're here.
Hi. Thank you. All right, so I'll read yours and then I'll sit down and read the other two into the record. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you being here right before Thanksgiving. That's tough, so thanks. This is a mayor's commendation presented to the Lions Club of Aurora Grande. In recognition of your generosity and support in funding the Rancho Hoops project, demonstrating a commitment to enriching Aurora Grande's recreational facilities and creating a sense of place for Aurora Grande residents and visitors. Your efforts, your sponsorship, and $12,000 ensured the project's success, leaving a lasting legacy of civic pride and community partnership. Thank you for your contributions and your commitment to making Aurora Grande a more vibrant and beautiful place. There you go. And we'd love to hear a little bit more about what you're doing next.
Oh, that's a good question. We're going to continue doing our normal scholarships and fundraising for that portion of it, giving to the high school and also to the -- my wife and I started a trades scholarship that for people that are going into the trades, whether it be culinary, automotive, or anything like that. So we're pursuing those efforts. We may be teaming up with Sheridan and the rec department again on another project. We don't know yet, but we're just happy that this project went and with your approval and the city's efforts to make it go through, and it happened. And it was a great day out there on the ribbit-cutting day, so.
I just want to add, thank you. It meant a lot to our club, especially having our logo on the court itself. Thank you so much. And have any of you been out there to view it at all yet? Have you? Oh, great. So again, we love giving back to the community. We love being Lion members, and again, thanks.
And I always say, you guys, no offense to all our other clubs, but you guys do the best barbecue.
I would agree with that.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go ahead and read the other two into the record because they're important, and they're mayor's commendations, and these people were also instrumental in getting this done. So the first one will go to the Pick family. And this will be the second time that we're recognizing the Pick family for a project backboard. In recognition of your leadership and vision in spearheading the Rancho Hoops Public Art Project, transforming the Rancho Grande Park Basketball Court into a vibrant and interactive public art piece. Your dedication to giving back to your community by fostering spaces for people of all ages to experience joy through play and creating a cherished amenity for residents and visitors to enjoy for years to come is admirable. Thank you for your contributions and commitment to making Aurora Grande a more vibrant and beautiful place. And to Trevor Weiger from Project Backboard, we worked with him again at Struthers Park as well, so it's nice to have him back. In recognition of your dedication and expertise in executing the Rancho Hoops Public Art Project, showcasing exceptional craftsmanship and passion. Your passion for enhancing public spaces has left a lasting impact on Aurora Grande, setting a standard for community collaboration and artistic excellence. Thank you for your contributions and commitment to making Aurora Grande more vibrant and beautiful place. So thanks to all who made that possible. And I see Sheridan in the back. And I just want to thank our rec department as well, because without them, none of these fun things come to fruition. So it's a great joint effort across all those people. And so with that, we'll move on to item 6B, City Manager Communications. And we have Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director, Mr. Robison, here tonight to deliver that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. We have a couple of things. The first is our, just a reminder that we have our 2024 Holiday Parade. It's taking place this coming Sunday, December 1st, starts at 5 o'clock PM. It's a really well-attended parade that we have every year. And the Jingle Bell Dash will also be taking place, and that's a pretty quick race through the village for our youth ages preschool through sixth grade. The race begins with, or the race events begin with registration outside Humdinger at 3:30, with the race starting at 4 o'clock. For more information to register in advance, it's a free event. Please visit www.aurogrande.org backslash catalog. And you can go in there and get yourself all set up or get your kids set up for the race. The fall edition of the city's newsletter just came out. It's called the Aurora Grande Gazette. It's now available on our website. It includes information about our largest project in the city's history that's coming up, and that's the Trafficway Bridge replacement. And copies will be available at city facilities very soon, in the coming weeks, too. And lastly, FCFA, the Five Cities Fire Authority, completed its fire captain recruitment early this month. And Ian Bennett was promoted to captain on November 22nd, excuse me. Additionally, Captain Bennett was selected by his peers to receive the honor of the 2024 FCFA Firefighter of the Year, which was presented at the FCFA Holiday Party on November 21st. So Captain Bennett's promotion and recognition of firefighter of the year is a result of his professionalism, his character, dedication, and the expertise he has shown to be a proven leader and exceptional public servant in our community. That ends my presentations and information, so I can answer any questions if you need me.
I have one quick one, not a question, but an observation. So the parade, just for the public's knowledge, is going to run backward, right? Starting at Mason and going toward?
That is correct, yes. So it ran the other way last year, so we're going to try a new route. We think it's going to work great. Sheridan's worked on it with our police department and our public works teams and fire, so yeah, we'll be ready for that.
Thank you. Just want to not have that catch people off guard. Okay. So with that, we will go on to city council reports. And so for mine, 7A, CJPIA has not met, because it's not July. Five Cities Fire Authority hasn't met since October. The San Luis Obispo County Mayor's Meeting, Councilmember Seacrest attended on my behalf. Sanitation District did meet, and it was just basically an update about the redundancy project. And we're getting so close to being done to the fix for the problem that came through in engineering. So I hope to be delivering good news in January about that, but it's just kind of going through its motions, so nothing germane to report there. The one other thing I would report, though, under other, is I attended the Mayor's Consortium for Vandenberg again with City Manager Downing a few weeks ago. And that continues to move forward with the idea of creating sort of a multi-city group that can, I know I've reported this to you before, that can work alongside with pre-existing contracts with Vandenberg to potentially be able to have us fulfill some of their needs. So we'll see how that goes forward. That's going to take some time to put that together. That will be yet another JPA kind of style of entity. So that's just kind of in the preliminary stages, and I'll continue to report out on that quarterly. So with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Protem Guthrie.
Thank you for that. So starting with the County Water Resources Advisory Committee, we did meet, and we had a nice report from the Conservation District on their efforts to work with the ag community for both soil and water conservation. This month, it was the RTA meeting. Not a lot to report there, although we are getting good reports on the electric buses actually functioning pretty well on the regional routes, particularly they're now using it on Route 10, going all the way to Santa Maria and back. I've even rode that a couple of times, so that works as well as the Morro Bay. I don't know if they've tried it going over the grade yet, but I do understand that it will go up the grade quite quickly, whether they'll do it all day long or not. I don't know. Integrated Waste Management, actually a couple of interesting things there. We are putting out for a new fee study, so hopefully we will solve this problem where we've been over-collecting unintentionally. I'll just say that the way the fee was set up, the cost for, that they were based on, that there was a percentage of that cost have gone up way faster than any of the expenses for IWMA. So actually, we have a $600,000 extra reserve that we're working on, on making sure that doesn't happen anymore. We also have purchased a new building, so the IWMA will be moving out of the downtown area to an area just on the other side of the freeway. They're still in downtown. Right now, they actually have to occupy two buildings, so they'll be able to relocate to a single building. And we'll be selling, they rent one building and own the other, and they, of course, will be selling the other building. Might actually turn out to make the agency a little bit of money because of the difference in cost there. And then finally, I attended, along with City Manager, thank you, Matt Downing.
Just say Matt.
There you go. I was going to say, yeah, the meeting of the Mads. At any rate, we attended the roundtable where they went over their strategy specifically around housing, you know, the amount of housing that we're going to need to make the things that they're planning on doing come to fruition. Also, a specific deal on precision manufacturing. And then finally, the regional cooperation that's worked out here between the two counties, between Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County. Yes. And that's it. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Barnage is not in attendance, so we'll turn it over to Councilmember George.
Thank you. I have no report outs.
Councilmember Seacrest, do you want me to buy time, tell jokes? Okay.
Thank you. And in no particular order, I also attended the Economic Conference with City Manager Downing and Councilperson Guthrie. Let's see, I attended the mayor's meeting in place of the mayor, of course, hosted by Mayor Rixem and Mora Bay, which was very nice, and mostly just everyone discussing, of course, what the national election results, how that's going to affect funding at all different levels. So that's kind of the stress everyone's having with that. I also attended the, bear with me, the Homeless Services Oversight Council for Councilperson Barnage, and there's a number of items with that. One of the, actually, an item of fair amount of concern for ourselves and I think Pismo Beach Councilmember and Grover Beach and Jana at Five Cities Homeless is there's been a change in required focus of funding in terms of, big grant, in terms of permanent affordable middle-income housing, which of course is really important. But it sounds as though right now, the way, it hasn't been approved, but the way it's been reworked, it sounds as though it would take a chunk of funding out of housing services, which is what the organization's like, Five Cities Homeless, come under. So it's still in the process, but there was some big concern by our area about that. And there's, it's going to be in front of the Board of Supervisors on December 10th. So of course, Jana will attend, and I will try to attend, too, and maybe we can get some more clarity. The question is, why couldn't that be taken from some other area, if that makes sense? That, we also, not me, but everyone else voted in, nine new members on that board filled positions, and many are current folks that are just going to, you know, fold over and serve once again. There was a presentation on homeless youth services, which was informative and moving. There's several thousand youth that qualify for those services. And there was a discussion about what rights they're entitled to in terms of going to their homeschool or their primary school, no matter where they get moved to, and also the right to transportation, which is, seems positive and is an interesting challenge sometimes. Warming centers are starting to open up. Both Five City Homeless and Prado are opening. As you've, everyone's probably heard, they use the NOAA app for those, punch in their zip code and look for temperatures that are going to be 38 degrees or less, or a 50% chance of rain. And the warming center that we have now in A.G. is doing some really cool things, one of which, and they have already been doing this, but they're continuing to have transportation at particular routes where they can pick folks up, which is really helpful, of course. And they're talking about trying to possibly make something work down in Napomo, which would be awesome, obviously, to get folks where they need to go. And they also have a new situation they're trying out, which is to allow some pets. So stay tuned, but that's, of course, I was helpful. I think that's it for Five. Okay, bear with me. I also went to the Zone 3 Advisory Committee for Councilperson Barnage. And things are looking pretty good in terms of the budget. They're, obviously, we're halfway through the year, and they've spent about 19% of the budget, which is all in line. Mr. Spiegel was just speaking and said, basically, water usage tracking is going well, and everyone's doing a very good job, which is always nice to hear. And we've been hearing that for a while in terms of folks conserving water. They have a big, a few big projects they're waiting on. They're waiting for some invoices to come in. They had to do a spillway investigation, and maybe folks know this, but I hadn't heard it, using ground penetrating radar, things of that nature. They didn't see anything alarming, but there's going to be a consultant looking at the whole picture and decide whether anything needs to be fixed. And I think that came in under the Northern Marine Fisheries contacted them. Anyway, to be looking at that, so, okay. Again, bear with me. Okay. I've never had this. Okay. Air Pollution Control District. Things are basically fine. They were talking about different programs, and I'm not going to, of course, go over all of them, but they have the new lawn and garden electrification program. And it's basically giving vouchers for purchase of electric landscaping equipment to eligible organizations. So it could be a commercial group, could be a public agency if they do their own maintenance, and if they operate out of Slow County, but also nonprofits and small landscaping businesses. So it actually could be a pretty big boon. I think they're talking about reimbursing up to 85% of the cost and also first-time purchases of batteries and chargers. And so it would be items like electric mowers, blowers, vacuums, chainsaws, et cetera. They added a 5% incentive if the business is done locally. So if the equipment is purchased locally, which is nice, and the goal is to reduce gasoline diesel-powered landscape equipment pollutant, which lead to smog and greenhouse gases, and also expose operators to increased health risks.
Did you get any kind of a flyer or something from them that we might be able to share?
I did not, but I could take a photo of my, okay, let me see what I can do. No, it actually sounds like a great thing, and they're, they want people to participate, and it's, I mean, especially the small businesses, so. And they were looking at a number of emissions reduction projects that have been funded recently. And in, well, in the past year, and I won't go into all of them, but there's one, the Farber Program. We've heard of this before, and the goal is to get folks into cleaner ag and off-road equipment. In the year 2324, they replaced old agricultural tractors and equipment with the cleanest new equipment, put $1.5 million back into local hands with 19 new tractors, which is great, and also six new engines on marine vessels, because marine vessels actually contribute quite a lot. So that seemed like a very good thing. The revenues and expenditures in the first four months of the fiscal year are within the budget expectation, so that's always good. The dunes are doing well, and the quote was, really nice downwards trends keep manifesting as the vegetation takes hold out there and flourishes. They filed their Air Toxics Hotspots Annual Report, which looks at all the particular businesses that are, I guess, the worst producers in the county. which looks at all the, all the particular businesses that are, I guess, the worst producers in the county, and actually, I think the county does very well. It's highly monitored. So there's only a few that they're, that come into even a slightly higher category, and those get monitored more closely, so they're fine. See if that's everything on, I think that's it for Air Pollution Control Board. And then I went to the Air Pollution Control Board South Section Meeting, which is, I'm a member on that committee, and it's San Luis Obispo, Monterey, and San Luis Obispo, Ventura, and Santa Barbara. And so basically, we just go over like what the, what the big things are that everyone's working on. And I don't think I have really a report other than that, and I think that's it. Thank you.
That's it?
Oh, wait, sorry, no, no. One more, sorry. The South County Chamber of Commerce did not have a meeting this last month, but on December 4th, they're gonna have their next rise and shine, which is, as always, at 7:30 with everyone meeting there. And then they're having a Small Business Saturday on November 30th, which I believe is to promote, obviously, small business in town, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's, I think that's traditionally the bi-local day.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you for all that covering for everybody. Look what happens when you retire.
I know what?
All right. That takes us to community comments and suggestions. This is items that are not on tonight's agenda, so please keep your items to one minute or less and address the council as one body. So if anyone would like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda, now's your chance.
Hello, Gia Powell, and I protest that you have trampled on my First Amendment rights to speak for three minutes, so I'll do my best. So I wanna know if there's any safeguards that are being put in place after the fiasco with Mr. Harris's will. He, you basically try to extort him into complying with your ridiculous demands, and he had to hire an attorney to protect his constitutional rights. So I guess violating a citizen's constitutional rights, which y'all seem to do constantly and are comfortable with, do matter. And so, and apparently, even breaking your own policy and ordinances is also routine. So I wanna know if, you know, who's gonna be held accountable? Is it gonna be city staff, the city council? What do we have a city attorney for when, obviously, Mr. Harris sent two attorney letters, one in October of 2023 and another in June of 2024? So I'd just like to know the answer to that. Who's gonna be held accountable for this? Because that's our, that's our money. Tens of, over $10,000 wasted. Probably much more than that. Sorry.
Hello. I, it's kind of the same topic, but I was reading one of the attorney's letters, and the things that he was complaining about is the conditions that were put on his well permit. They were erroneous. They were unintelligible. They said they couldn't even, you couldn't hold the man to these conditions because it was so unclear of what he was supposed to do. And then, so those are essentially considered void. And then with the other permits, they were so vague, which essentially boils down to the same thing. They were just, you can't hold somebody to account when you can't even describe what it is that they're supposed to do. And on top of that, it not only broke our city statutes, it broke our state and our U.S. Constitution. There were several clauses that were referenced in the U.S. Constitution that were violated. That is not your job. Your job is to protect our rights.
Thank you.
Not trample on them.
Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing no one coming forward in the chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, we were, we will close public comment, and because the answers to those questions are quite involved, and you're already working with staff on that, we will not be answering those live today, so we will answer those via email and the continued correspondence that continues to happen outside the chambers. So let's go forward to Item 9. That is our consent agenda, and tonight, we have a few here. We have Items 9A through 9G. So first, I'll check in with the council and see if anyone would like to pull something for separate action. And I just have a quick question on 9G, but it's for the public's edification, Brian, so why don't we go ahead and go to that first? So I'm just hoping, I like the update here, and it's just not too visible to the public as to what's coming next. I don't have any questions. I just thought maybe you could give a quick, what for, about what's happening between now and what was mentioned in the report as April.
Thank you. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director, thank you for the opportunity, because we also, right now, have a land use survey that is out online and available to the public right now until November 30th. So that's at planaroyogrande.com. Please go out and take a look at the survey and fill it out. We wanna see what the public thinks about land use in the city, and specifically about three focus areas. So go check that out. And that really begins the land use scenarios section of the general plan update, which is extremely important section of the update. It looks at land use throughout the city and sort of the direction and vision that the city is gonna go in the next 20 to 30 years, so appreciate that.
Thank you for that, and I'll add something under comments in a few about that. So if you're listening and your, your interest was piqued by our Community Development Director, well, I'll just say it now. I just wanna say it a little bit more plainly, that if you're watching at home, we really want you to participate in that survey, because that is the bulk of what we do, and it informs the council and staff as to how to handle, what comes in, all the, all the projects that come in, how we're gonna handle infill, how we're gonna handle agriculture. All those things are, and the change that may or may not occur, and we want that to represent your vision and our vision. So the more people that participate in that, the more that is a collective vision that's gonna last for 10, 15, 20 years, just as, just as our last general plan did. So please, please, please participate in that. So with that, we'll open up public comment on Items 9A through 9G. Does anybody have a comment on our consent agenda?
How much money and time is being wasted on all the consultants you've hired for the general plan when this is a land use, you said it yourself, Ms. Mayor, agency, basically? So what exactly does the staff do and you do? Why do we have to hire consultants to guide you when a general plan should have been amended over the years instead of this giant project that you, I guess, pretend to get everybody's input in and on, when it's actually, we're really restricted by our financial situation? And people can put in their suggestions in the suggestion box. So should we pay the staff more money so we can have a staff that can actually do that job without having to pay a bunch of consultants and waste millions of dollars of taxpayers' money on that? I would love the answer to that question. Thank you.
Anyone else on Items 9A through 9G?
Mike Harris, I've already filled out that survey and stuff online. It is so basic. It's ridiculous. It's, from what I'm seeing, it's a waste of money. I've offered my services to the city manager and stuff, but, yeah, bottom line, that was a waste of money, that survey. I've already completed it. It's too basic.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else coming up, we'll check in with city clerk again.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comment, bring this back to the council for discussion and possible action.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve consent agenda items 9A through 9G.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russum?
Yes.
All right, this takes us to our first public hearing, Item 10A. This is the citywide utility box painting, Phase 3, Staff Project 24006. And the applicant is Shirley Horacek from Arroyo Grande Public Art. And I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Pedrati. I'm not sure what's happening here.
Sure. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. Yes, a couple of items from the Community Development Department, and we'll start with Shayna Gropen, our Assistant Planner, who will do the utility box painting presentation. Thank you. Today, I have for the council's consideration Staff Project 24006 for the painting of five utility boxes citywide. All right, I'll begin by providing a brief background information regarding the public art review process. The first public art program was implemented in 2002, and the formal art donation program was adopted in 2004. These policies were updated in 2011 and 2021, respectively. On May 14th, 2024, the city council adopted Resolution 5358, which restructured the process, requiring approval by the city council after receiving a recommendation from the Architectural Review Committee. So there have been two previous rounds or phases of this project. The first phase was approved in 2022, and the second phase was approved in 2023, which resulted in eight boxes having been painted to date. I'm sure you guys have noticed them throughout the city. This third and final phase of the project entails the painting of five boxes. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed and recommended approval for the following designs at the regular meeting on October 7th of 2024, and I will present those proposed designs and locations for you now. All right, the first design is "Oh So Sweet" by Ann B. Young, being recommended for the box located at 1053 East Grand Avenue, which is in front of the pharmacy. Next is "Joyful Soaring in the Clouds" by Deborah Lord. And this, this design is recommended for the placement at the southwest corner of El Camino Real and North Halcyon Road, near the cemetery and the freeway off-ramp. Next is "Gating the Streets of Arroyo Grande" by Bijou Bornes. This design is proposed on the box at the Fair Oaks and Trafficway intersection. That's in front of the Chevrolet dealership. Next is the Magpie Afternoon Design by artist Eric Davison. This design is proposed for the northwest corner of East Grand Avenue and North Elm Street, which is that kind of four-way intersection in front of Jack in the Box. You can see in the background. And the final design for consideration is "Sun She Rises" by Catrille Ford. This design is proposed for the northeast corner of North Oak Park Boulevard and West Branch Street. All right, so the new public art review process really emphasizes the importance of not restricting artistic expression while encouraging the best combination of sites and artwork possible. As a reminder, here are the selection criteria to keep in mind as you review the design proposals for the project. All right, and part of the project proposal involves waiving of a permit application fee in the amount of $1,068, and five minor encroachment permits for the sidewalk closures associated with the painting. So while the painting is occurring, the sidewalks will be closed briefly and rerouted, and that is in the amount of $74 per utility box, as well as accepting donations of time and materials. And finally, it is recommended that the council determine that painting of utility boxes is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 15301, which applies to minor alterations of existing structures. And that's my whole presentation. I went through it quickly, but we do have the applicant here, Shirley Gibson, who is a representative of AGPA, or, sorry, Shirley Horacek, AGPA, and, yes, that's it.
It's okay. There's lots of Shirlies.
There are.
First of all, nice presentation. Very visual. They're not usually visual like that. It's so nice, so well done. All right, first of all, let's check in with the council, see if anybody has questions. Councilmember Seacrest, any questions? Okay, Councilmember George?
Not so much a question, but just a, a comment for the public. When I had spoken with Bill on Monday, I had asked about when there's graffiti on the boxes. Since the city is responsible for maintenance, how does the city handle the graffiti and what makes it so easy for the graffiti to be removed?
So most of the boxes have a coating on them that allows city staff to remove graffiti relatively easily. We do appreciate it when the, when the public lets us know early, because it doesn't have time to bake on in the sun day after day. So it's proved to be, to work pretty well. We've had some graffiti on a couple of the, of the boxes, and we were able to go out in the morning, in the next morning, and have that removed without damaging the artwork too much. Sometimes the artist has to come back and do a little touch-up, but it's been relatively minor, so thank you for that question.
Thank you. I just thought that was important, since we are responsible for maintenance. Those were my only questions.
And Mayor Protem?
All right, I have no questions either, so let's open up to public comment. If you would like to comment on this item, this is Item 10A, would please come forward. And seeing no one, we'll check in with the city clerk, see if anyone online would like to comment.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comment, bring this back to the council for comment and possible consideration. I do have comments, but I don't know if anybody else does. Councilmember George, do you have comments?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge, I love the connection of the art and the location, especially the art that is designated by the cemetery. So I don't know if that was done intentionally or if it's just by happenstance, but I thought that was a perfect location for that art piece. I do wanna thank the artists for donating their time for painting these boxes. I love seeing them around town, so seeing five more, it's just, I appreciate the art, so I'm grateful for that, and I'm happy to waive the permit fees.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. I would just echo Councilmember George's comments. Just really fantastic pieces of art, and I feel so lucky that our community has this program. Thank you, Shirley. And that, that folks are willing to come, you know, give of their time and talent, and I would gladly be in favor of waiving the fees.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I too am in favor of waiving the fees. I think these are a nice addition to our, to our community. Thanks.
I am certainly in favor of waiving the fees, and I just wanna say a personal thank you to Shirley Horacek, because I know it is sometimes not easy dealing with our staff. And, or let's say, sometimes, let me rephrase that, because our staff is great. Sometimes the, the speed at which things happen in government is not the expected speed from the public, and therein lies the rub, and I just appreciate your perseverance and everything you've personally done, that I know, to bring these things forward. I know how much the community loves them. Can't wait to see the next five boxes. I'm glad this one isn't four. And then with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. Madam Mayor, council, I move to adopt a resolution approving a public art project. Madam Mayor, Council, I move to adopt a resolution approving a public art project to paint utility boxes, accepting donations of time and materials, and waiving permit application fees, as well as finding the boxes categorically exempt from CEQA.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. Could we get a roll call, please? Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russen?
Yes.
Next on the list is item 10B. This is Appeal Case 24002, Appeal of Planning Commission Denial of Tentative Parcel Map 23001. The location is 444 Lyerly Lane. The appellant is Bruce Van De Veren and Jeannie Helfenstein. The representative is MBS Land Surveys. And before we get started, I need to announce that I live within not just 300 feet of the project, probably 50 feet of the project. So I have a very clear conflict of interest due to proximity, so I'll be stepping out of the room while this one goes on. And I will turn it over to Mayor Protem to handle that in my absence.
And with that, I will open the public hearing for an appeal of the Planning Commission denial of tentative parcel map 23001.
Thank you. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director. The appellant tonight has requested a continuance of the project and has agreed to waive the appeal timeline of 60 days for hearing under the subdivision MAP Act, to the extent applicable. So staff is recommending that the council continue the public hearing to a date certain of January 14th, 2025, at the request of the appellant.
I will look to the city attorney here. Generally, we've opened, gone ahead and opened for the pub, for any public that's speaking. So with that, I am going to go ahead and open it for any public that is here to speak on this item. You can speak now, you can, of course, come back when, when it comes back. So if anyone here would like to comment on this tonight, you're certainly welcome. This is your time. With that, I'll look to go online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Question? Sorry, but could, could a member of the public potentially make a comment now, but also make comments on the 14th?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And then actually, I didn't open it up to see if any of you guys had any questions. So much presentation.
I just have one, and it's more of a clerical question. I know that the recommendation is for a date certain of January 14th, looking at the email correspondence within the staff report. The 14th might also be an impacted day in that it might be better for me, the, the second meeting of the month in January. So is it best for us to leave that a little bit more open-ended? Or are you certain that the 14th is a date that we can meet?
Brian Pedrati again. The date, the 14th would work in terms of the council's agenda, as far as I know. But it is up to the council to determine which date you'd like to continue it to. The email included both, there was a preferred for the 14th, but also we're open to the 28th, 25th, or sorry, 28th of January as well.
So would it, would it give our staff a little more flexibility if we set it for a date possibly certain for those two dates, as opposed to locking down staff to one date if that is an impacted agenda date already?
I'll look to Isaac as well, but I think we'd want it to be continued to a date certain, one of those dates.
Okay.
Director Pedrati is correct. The council can continue it to a date certain. The applicant's preference had been the 14th, which Director Pedrati mentioned, CDD staff is, is able to do in part because the request for the continuance came in so late. Ultimately, it's city council's decision, because you'll be voting to continue it. And staff would request a date certain because it allows the city to avoid republishing notice for the public hearing.
Thank you. That's my only question.
All right, then I will move to any, any comments? All right, then I'll, I'll move that we continue this item to a date certain of January 14th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for a roll call.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
All right, zooming through this agenda. Item 11A is preliminary approval of community development block grant projects for 2025. Mr. Pedrati?
Thank you. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director, and you said it all. We have Andrew Perez here, our Planning Manager, to give the presentation on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As Brian mentioned, I am Andrew Perez, the city's Planning Manager, and I'm here this evening to present staff's preliminary recommendations for this, for year 2025's community development block grant program. So the CDBG is a federal program that's administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it distributes funds to participating cities and counties for a variety of community development needs, such as affordable housing, social, social services, and public facility improvements. These funds can be allocated to a variety of different projects, as long as one of the national objectives are being met. Those objectives are projects that benefit low and moderate income residents, projects that aids in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or addresses an urgent community development need that poses a serious or immediate threat to public health or welfare. The county, which administers the CDBG program for the participating cities and the county itself, estimates that $64,255 in CDBG funding will be available to the city in 2025. This is a $17,000 approximate reduction from last year's allocation, so it's something to keep in mind as we go through the presentation. The CDBG funds can be allocated anywhere between six categories, those being public services, public facilities, economic development, area benefit, housing rehabilitation, and administration. Being a federal program, there are a number of regulations that apply to CDBG projects. For example, a minimum of 70% of the CDBG funds must be used for projects or programs that benefit low-income residents. There is a 30% cap for projects that propose to eliminate a blight, a 15% cap for public service projects, and all CDBG projects must comply with federal regulations with regards to environmental laws, labor laws, and procurement regulations. So beginning with the public services category, which is capped at 15% of the city's allocation, which is approximately $9,638 for year 2025. The city received one application requesting public service funds, and that came from the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. This application requests funding to support its rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. This program provides financial assistance to individuals that are facing homelessness by supporting them with emergency utility payments or rent payments to help them maintain and secure housing. This request aligns with the countywide plan to address homelessness, which the city is supportive of, and also aligns with previous and prior council direction to allocate funding to organizations that support, organizations that provide and support services to the unhoused. Therefore, staff does recommend allocating the requested $9,600 to Five Cities Homeless Coalition for this cause. Moving to the public facilities category, staff is recommending an allocation of $46,302, which would go towards replacing curb ramps to meet ADA standards in conjunction with the city's annual pavement management program. So the CDBG funding will augment the city's budget for the annual pavement management program by replacing curb ramps that are adjacent to the streets that are being repaved as part of this program. So this strategy provides financial, financial flexibility, also provides the most efficient use of the city's pavement management budget, while also achieving one of the national objectives I mentioned a few slides ago. And finally, the administration category, which is capped at 20% of the city's total allocation. Pursuant to the city's and county cooperation agreement that constipulates the terms of CDBG, $8,353 would be returned to this county for its administration of the program, but no additional funding is allocated for city administration because administration of the pavement management project would also administer the CDBG funds in conjunction with that. No funding requests were received for these three categories, the housing rehabilitation, economic development, or area benefit categories. So that leads us to our recommended allocations. This is table one, taken from your staff report, that outlines the proposed allocations and compares them to last year's 2024 allocations. So in conclusion, staff does recommend that council preliminarily approve funding recommendations for the city's allocation of 2025 CDBG funds, as shown in table one of your staff report. And two, find that this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA Guidelines 15061. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's see if council has questions. Councilmember George, any questions of staff?
I have no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Seacrest?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
No questions.
All right, I have no questions either, only comments. So let's go ahead and open up public comment on item 11A. If you'd like to make a comment, come on up now. Hello, Mr. Lee. I've been waiting all night to welcome you over here across the border.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It's happy to be, happy to be in a, oof, I almost said Grover Beach, I apologize. Happy to be in Arroyo Grande. So I'm here with my Five Cities Homeless Coalition hat on. I'm the current board, board chair to, to that organization, and I'm playing a very poor Janet Nichols this evening. So she is otherwise committed for Thanksgiving. But I did want to preemptively say thank you for the recommendation for the, for the CDBG grant programs, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? And we'll check in with City Clerk? If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No raised hands. All right, so we'll close public comment, bring it back to us. Let's start with Councilmember Seacrest. Any comments?
No.
Councilmember George?
Yeah, I just want to say that I highly support the allocation for Five Cities Fire Authority, uh, Five Cities Fire Authority, Homeless Coalition, and I have no other comments.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I too am going to support staff recommendations. This has been a good program for the last few years, and I'd like to see it continue.
Ditto. The only thing I will add in is the council has directed repeatedly over the last few cycles that we don't take our administrative allocation and put it toward the projects. So I noticed that right away in the staff report, that that was a zero, so that made me very happy. Thank you for doing that and not, and hearing us from overtime. So with that, would anyone like to make a motion for this item?
I just... I would make a preliminary motion that the council preliminarily approve funding recommendations for the city's allocation of 2025 community development block grant funds, as shown in, previously shown in table one, and also find that this action is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, section 15061 subdivision B3.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Mae Russen?
Yes.
All right, item 12, council communications. Who has communications to have? I see you uncovering piles of notes over there. No? Anyone else? All right, well then, under council communications, I will just wish everyone here, everyone at home, everyone citywide, everyone in our orbits, a very wonderful and restful and peaceful Thanksgiving. We will look forward to seeing you in December. Our first meeting of December is our reorganization, where we're going to be swearing in myself again and two new council members, so it will be a joyous occasion. So we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks, and until then, please be safe when you're out there driving, all right, everyone? So that takes us to item 13, adjournment. We are adjourned.